Okay. I'll open the meeting for tonight. Rebecca, will you please call roll?
Flornoy.
Here.
Hallie.
Yes.
Gandy.
Yes.
Rasmussen.
Yes.
Pam.
Yes.
Tohill.
Yes.
Thank you. The consent agenda tonight, before I get started, as you can see, we're all wearing masks. We've done some adjustments on the mics. And if everyone will try to talk as clear as you can through your mask and hopefully everybody will be able to understand this if they're streaming and when this gets to TV. So back to the consent agenda. Approval of the minutes of the November 9th, 2020 council meeting. Approval of November 13th, 2020 payroll in the amount of $119,122.59. Acceptance of the Diversity Equity Inclusion Committee minutes. Acceptance of the Library Board minutes. Acceptance of the Beautification Commission minutes. Resolution authorizing fund transfers. Approval of total claims in the amount of $211,929.38. There were no claims over $75,000. Are there... Judy, do you have a...
Yes. I would like to see that Diversity Equity and Inclusion Committee minutes moved where we could have an open discussion so the public can see what's written in there. I would like that moved out of the consent agenda and down into the public forum for discussion.
Just tonight or forever?
For tonight.
Okay. Any objections? Do we...
Is it a motion?
Yes, I made the motion.
One second.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded to move those minutes down. I guess we can just put it at the beginning of resolution and action items? Would that be appropriate?
I think so.
Does that sound okay?
Sounds okay.
Okay. So it's been moved and seconded. Is there any questions or discussion? Not, please call a roll.
Pam.
Yes.
Flornoy.
Yes.
Hallie.
Yes.
Gandy.
Yes.
Tohill.
Yes.
Rasmussen.
Yes.
So that would move approve the consent agenda.
Okay.
As modified.
Okay.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. Any other discussion? Not, please call a roll.
Flornoy.
Yes.
Tohill.
Yes.
Rasmussen.
Yes.
Hallie.
Yes.
Gandy.
Yes.
Pam.
Yes.
Great, thank you. So we are going to open a session with the Jefferson County Board of Supervisors to discuss the Law Center 28e agreement. And we have Darren Hamilton here representing the supervisors. And we have Dee on the phone?
Yes, Dee is watching by YouTube. She's gonna...
Okay.
If there's any questions from her, she'll either contact Aaron or myself with a text. Well, I guess...
Aaron, go ahead.
I guess, protocol-wise, we're supposed to request an opening of the 2080 agreement to negotiate how it... or to have a discussion on how the funding is for... through the 2080 agreement, but specifically for, from our perspective, we want to look at the dispatch funding.
Correct.
So I think it'd be appropriate if we set up a committee meeting with the... not necessarily the entire service agency, but the servants agency... service agency supervisors and council members.
Correct.
Correct? Yes. That's what we envisioned as how this was going to go. And I and Dee and our incoming supervisor, Susie Drish, have no qualms with opening the 2080 agreement up. Lee Dimmitt is retiring at the end of December, so he won't be involved in what's going on moving forward. But he also approves with what's going on with us. And I just wanted to make that comment that Lee's down to the last five, six weeks... He sees the sunset. ...of his tenure. So... But yeah, we would move to go ahead and do that. Okay. John, what do we need to do then? Just approve that or...
Well, if you don't want to get into...
John, you want to go to the microphone, please?
We've been here a few times before as far as something that we amended as far as the cost. And if you don't want to spend a lot of time tonight talking about specific things that are questions on each side, then I would say maybe between the group, you decide when it would be good. I'm sure Sheriff Morton probably has hosted a meeting on this before out at the Law Center.
Correct.
And the people that know the most about dispatch are probably out there. So you might want to talk about board availability and some council committee availability, public safety committee probably, and our administration as far as getting together to look at specifics. So that's about as far as I'd say you go tonight. And then we'd have some participants as far as our administration besides our council committee. We'd also have Aaron, mayor, probably the chief of police, and somebody from dispatch right now. I think our chief of dispatch is...
Shannon Pester.
Pardon, Shannon.
Shannon Pester.
Shannon Pester.
So if we can figure out the bodies that need to be there, then I would say the purpose for tonight would probably be to figure out how soon that can happen. You just need to do it within the fiscal year after you've had this session tonight to talk about getting it reopened.
So could Darren and I tomorrow set something up and get with, I think it's Doug and Martha, isn't it? Okay. And then we could set something up and then you guys... I don't want to keep you here any longer than you have to be. Yeah. So if that's...
Yeah, that would be fine with me. And then I'd be able to confer with Dee. She's listening right now. She said that it would be good for a work session and we can set it up as such and work that direction with it between you guys and us. So why don't we talk tomorrow and get something worked out?
Sounds good to me.
Is that okay?
Yep.
Counsel? All right.
Everybody's okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Darren.
Thank you, Darren.
Yep.
That was easy.
I tried to keep it that way.
Okay. So there are no public forum or appearances, so we'll go down to resolution, action items, and ordinances. And let's talk about the minutes from the Diversity Equity Inclusion Committee minutes. All right. Judy, go ahead.
All right. So I guess one of the things I want to get clear is the purpose of this committee to begin with. But where I'm really concerned is the very first definitions of equity and equality. These definitions that are being given to us are what is trending on social media right now, but it is not the definitions that are being given in our national constitution and Bill of Rights, nor of our state constitution and Bill of Rights. And so what is happening here is it is not the job of government to be giving opportunities. We assist opportunities to happen, but we don't give opportunities. It's turning things around backwards. Every U.S. citizen born or naturalized has the opportunity to be pursuing their own identity and their own freedoms in that. It's completely backwards in equality in saying that we're going to give you an opportunity so then you can find your identity. It's up to each person to find their identity. There are many different avenues to be able to do that, but it's not government's job to be doing this very thing. And so, without boring you, I did look up the definitions and they are simple and self-explanatory. Equity is the quality of being fair or impartial. Fairness and impartiality. That's just how quick and easy that is. And equality is the state or quality of being equal. Correspondence in quantity, degree, value, rank, or ability. All those have variables within them, but you can find your place in the community. That's just guaranteed right to anyone who's here. And so my question is, are we saying that we're not following our constitution and that locally we've got some problems there? Or what? But these trending definitions might not be known by the mass in the community that's helping pay and support this government. And I think the taxpayer needs to know what is being defined here compared to what they might think these words mean. Because it's a completely different meaning than what the average citizen would think that yes, this is what we're going for.
Thank you, Judy.
Okay.
May I offer a suggestion? And that is that you and I meet with them and we have this discussion.
That'd be great.
Because their role really is to provide advice to the council on our community of, you know, things that may need to be touched on or things that we need to work on as a community. So I guess that would be my suggestion, that we have a further discussion with the committee on that.
Ask a question?
Sure.
Is it their role to make recommendations to the council?
They can, yes.
So they have posted meetings that are open to the public?
They're supposed to, yes.
Okay.
With agenda items.
Right. So all we're doing here is accepting these minutes. We're not evaluating whether they're accurate or not. We're just accepting them.
Yeah, we weren't there. We have to trust whoever wrote them that this was the discussion they had. This isn't policy of the government. This is a volunteer group of people having a conversation about what it's like for people who have not experienced the kind of equity and equality that they just spoke of, Judy. There are people in our country that are marginalized and don't have the same opportunities. So if they're going to discuss it, that's what their group is about. And then if they advise us and we make action, then that's something the taxpayers can have an issue with. This is the conversation they're having. They haven't proposed any policy to not ask us to state these definitions somewhere publicly. They're taking offense to something that is just a conversation that this group had amongst themselves.
I just want people who are watching definitions to know that these definitions are there. And if it was in the consent agenda and we just breeze by it, they wouldn't necessarily know that there is a change of definition on these words. And that's important to some in our community. And that's not about being offended. It's about drawing it to the attention so people who want to give voice to this can without us just breezing by it. Okay?
Well, it might be worth your while then to advise them to adopt a formal definition that they're going to operate under since they're calling themselves the Equity and Inclusive Committee. They should know what those words mean when they entitle their committee that way. So they would adopt a definition. And you might suggest the one that you have there to them. Might be worthwhile.
Well, it depends what kind of committee they are. So they're not codified. So they're not a committee that's defined by our code. So they're an ad hoc committee, which would mean they only exist for a certain purpose. They could come up with bylaws similar to what the Natty Committee did. But again, we're splitting hairs a bit on a group that has yet to have advised the council on anything. So far, they've just got to... they just have discussions. They're not advising. They're not... they haven't engaged in the actual governmental process as of yet. They're just talking amongst themselves. I just don't want to censor their discussion.
So... but ultimately, anybody can go to any committee at any time. So, you know, so I would suggest that that discussion be had at that committee just so it's a little more clear and for, you know, for Judy, for myself, or anybody else who wants to come.
Right. These are open meetings. And for those people who feel these issues are important, they can attend.
They should be posted and they're open. And minutes are written.
That includes all council.
Yep.
So I'd move that we accept the minutes as are written.
Oh, okay.
We haven't done that yet, so...
Right. You're right. Okay. Is there a second to that?
Second.
Okay. It's moved by Flornoy, second by Gandy to accept these minutes as written. Any other discussion? Not, please call a roll.
Flornoy.
Yes.
Gandy.
Yes.
Rasmussen.
Yes.
Pam.
No.
To... or yeah, Tohill?
Yes.
Hallie.
Yes.
Thank you. Next action item is consideration to accept the proposed intersection improvements on Knight Street and Burlington as final. Matt?
I'm Matt.
I think that's Matt behind there.
Yes, it is.
I can't tell from here.
There's not much to look at there. What we have for you tonight is to consider and accept the Knight and Burlington sidewalk improvement project. All the work has been done from site reviews towards the specs. What we have tonight are two pay estimates for approval. Pay estimate number three in the amount of $20,543.75. And pay estimate number four, which is the retainage, which is the amount of $4,001. However, this afternoon, we've got an email from the Iowa DOT. If you're aware, this project utilized T-SIP funding, which was, I believe, about $66,000, so not quite two-thirds. The DOT is recommending that they review the project before the city totally accepts it. So what we'd like to do tonight is just approve pay estimate number three so we can at least get the final quantity paid out to the contractor while we're waiting for DOT concurrence.
So we're not accepting it as final?
Yes, we're not going to accept it as final anymore.
So tell us what you want us to move?
Just to approve pay estimate number three. Pay estimate number three.
For $20,000.
For $20,000.
$543.75.
So move to approve pay estimate number three.
Okay. Moved by Hallie?
Second.
Second by Tohill.
Everybody.
Any other discussion? Please call a roll.
Hallie.
Yes.
Tohill.
Yes.
Pam.
Yes.
Gandy.
Yes.
Flornoy.
Yes.
Rasmussen.
Yes.
Thank you. Next up, consideration of the fiscal year 20 annual tax increment financial report. Aaron?
Well, it's just an annual report that we're required to put into the state. It looks at the amount of money we've put into the project along with the expenses that we expensed out of that TIF area. And each one of the five areas that we have, TIF areas at this point. Overall, there's... I don't know what questions you might have about it. We took all the cash that we had on hand and expenses out and we're reporting it to the state. We utilized Travis Squires to help us with some of the bond payment and interest payments and stuff that go into this report. It's a rather in-depth report for what it is.
So does each of the individual TIFs have a positive cash flow?
Yeah. Right now, we all have positive...
We're all meeting obligations.
Yes. We're meeting our obligations, yes.
They can't tell from this, it's all collected together.
Right.
Good question. Any other questions?
Isn't that something we can see on our finance reports that we get? Each TIF? And if it's in a negative, it's going to be in parentheses, and if it's positive, then not. Correct. And we... none of them are in the negative at this point right now off the top of my head. I don't think so.
So that would be approved.
Okay. It's moved by Flornoy.
Second.
And second by Tohill to approve this TIF report. Any other discussion? Not, please call a roll.
Flornoy.
Yes.
Tohill.
Yes.
Gandy.
Yes.
Pam.
Yes.
Hallie.
Yes.
Rasmussen.
Yes.
Thank you. I was privating honestly. Next item, consideration of the Natty Land Committee bylaws. And Ron, go ahead.
Well, Aaron suggested some modifications at the last city council meeting. Everyone in our group is fine with them, so no questions from our side.
I just asked maybe Ron that. I think Fairfield City Council, the very first or second sentence of the bylaws, probably... probably city council should be capitalized. That's the only thing I saw.
I'm sorry, Paul, I'm not following you.
I was talking about section two.
The section two? The bylaws?
Line three from the top.
Yeah.
We can't make that. Oh, here they are. Okay. So this is section two, Paul?
I think it's... what'd you say, John? Is it line three?
Article one, lines...
Yeah, it's very... near the very top. Just city council, capitalized.
Oh, okay. Got it, got it, got it. Yeah.
You see what I'm talking about?
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah.
And I think some of the big takeaways that came out of here was the Natty Land, of course, is working on the Natty Land. But this also expanded a little bit to the prairie and wetlands and the native woodlands within the city limits of Fairfield.
Correct.
Also, Ron, I'm going to ask you another question. Could you explain a little bit the section on assets? Assets?
Assets are the...
I'm not clear what the bylaws say. I'm referring to the bylaws itself, the language in the bylaws. Because I understand the bylaws suggest that the money... well, let's find them.
Article six?
Yeah. How does it read, the language?
All funds accruing to the Fairfield Park and Recreation Foundation come from the current CRP contract. Additional funds could accrue through donation, grants, et cetera. Annual budgets are submitted to the Fairfield Parks and Recreation Foundation and city council prior to the beginning of each fiscal year. Properly documented invoices are submitted to the Fairfield Parks and Recreation Department Director. Section two of that article says, "Chairman or vice chairman shall report all funds received and invoices paid at each committee meeting."
So in the section that Doug just read, it says, "All funds accruing to the Fairfield Parks and Recreation Foundation come from the current CRP contract," that sentence? So is it clear in these bylaws what the connection is with... between the Fairfield Parks and Recreation Foundation and the Natty Committee?
From our side, it is. If you feel it needs to be... and John signed off on it. If you feel it needs to be further defined or something, I mean, we can discuss that.
I'm just asking. I mean, what is the connection?
The connection is those, the CRP funds... you know CRP, right?
Right.
Okay. So the way it works with the CRP is we got... that... they can't go directly to the city of Fairfield. It has to be with a private landowner. And so the funds go to a private landowner who is willing to step up and to take the funds and then turn them over and bring them to the Park and Rec Foundation, which they've done for the last five years. And then the Park and Rec Foundation acts as the financial conduit to receive the invoices and look them over and to pay for them, pay them.
So Paul, see that Resolution 3138 memorandum agreement? That's the original contract.
Okay.
Between the tenant and the Park and Rec Director. And it spells out...
Actually, the Park and Rec Foundation.
Well, the director signed it. So it was Derek Wolfco's signature?
It was. You're right, actually. Actually, it was signed by both Ron Haynes and Derek.
Okay. So, you know, from my understanding, which John explained it to me, Park and Rec Foundation exists for the purpose of supporting the Park and Rec Department. So typically, it's the director of the department who requests funds from the foundation. So the funds go to the foundation. Natty Land asks the director invoice, hey, we spent money on prairie seed or whatever.
Right.
And then the director's like, all right, I'll get your money from the foundation since that's just how it functions. But we were wondering why the foundation was named specifically. John has a little history on... It's not convoluted, but it's... there's like multiple players.
Yeah. The reason the foundation is named is because the funds from CRP, traditionally, most of them get used up. There's hardly anything left over. It just so happens that at the present time, they've had a couple of good years. So they've got some money there to talk about that's actually an asset. Some years, they just about spend themselves dry. But the Park and Rec Foundation was viewed as an entity that wouldn't get subjected to some of the concerns that traditional government audit is exposed to. It is a chilling effect on a donor-directed gift to give it to you guys. Hate to say that, but that's what happens. It happens with the county. It happens with other governmental entities because when you get audited, the auditor's looking for you, if you've got any leftovers, to have them roll into the general fund. Doesn't work that way with the 501(c)(3) private foundation. So the donor directing the gift or saying, "I'm okay with this CRP money being used for ongoing maintenance, repair projects that have to do with Natty-type wetland and so forth, staying inside a 501(c)(3) instead of going to the government." So that's the distinction and why it's operated that. Actually, it was envisioned that way back in about 2007, and Ron was there, so he knows what they were talking about and what they liked to do. We haven't had money every year. That contract, I think, actually, if CRP's still favored by Congress, could go as long as 2029. And that's part of the benefit of this committee is they're with it long-term and they know what their goals are. Whether there's money this year or not, that's an if. And so I guess my reaction to this year after year is they still have good accounting at the foundation level. They get audited, but they do... They get audited, but they do it privately as a 501(c)(3). This year, they got audited partly by the state auditor because of the demonstrated connection between this and money that Park and Rec Board sees going to, uh, Park and Rec location or a city location. And it's intended to work that way. So, anyway, enough said, okay?
Ron, I just got one question or point. Ron? Uh, you just referred to the current CRP contract?
I'm sorry?
The, on our assets, it just refers to, quote, the current CRP contract?
Which expires 2024, actually, not 2029.
Does that contract have a number? I mean, it's not very specific which contract we're talking about.
I have a copy of it on my computer, I don't...
I'm just gonna say, can you specify more explicitly which contract you're talking about?
Okay, we could add that in.
That's all.
CRP number?
There's a resolution number on the copy that's here. I wonder if the council had, had voted to approve of it. If you open that link at the top, it's resolution number 3138.
The memorandum of agreement.
Yeah, maybe... Put that in there. See there at the top?
Yeah, whichever way, as long as you can specify which contract the bylaws are talking about, I think that'd be an improvement.
Or you can say the August 15th, 2014 contract. So then you got at least a date tied to it.
Right.
Okay.
I wanted to suggest that maybe on the first sentence of number one under assets, just call it the Natty CRP contract.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, careful with what was...
Yeah, that's a great idea.
There's only one.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah.
It's the only one.
Okay.
Okay. Doug, you want to make that a motion?
To modify the bylaws?
Yeah, to accept the, um...
Oh.
To accept the bylaws without modification.
So if you change, change the word current to Natty or Natty, I think we're done. Then it's the Natty CRP agreement.
Yeah.
Okay. As long as it's clear. I'll make the motion to, uh, accept the bylaws of the Natty, um, Land Committee as presented and modified as suggested by Councilmen Gandy and Flornoy.
Second.
Okay, okay. Moved by Flornoy, second by Rasmussen. Any other discussion? Not, please call a roll.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Toohill?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Pam?
Yes.
Sorry, my pencil's out.
Okay, thank you. That was proved unanimously. Uh, next resolution, consideration of engineering services agreement with French Reniker Associates for Design of the Street Bond Package.
All right, and Matt's gonna go over the, um, agreement, but I wanted to give you a little bit of, uh, the background and the funding associated with, uh, this proposed project. In 2013, 14, and 15, the city did several, um, street reconstruction projects and the city bonded for those projects. That bond is the last payment, is going to, uh, happen in the next year or two. So, to keep our spending levels at approximately the same, we're proposing doing a similar bond package, um, and getting another large chunk of streets done. Also then, last year, French Reniker did, um, a capital improvements plan where they ranked the streets based off of the pavement condition, uh, traffic volume, and some other factors that the council decided. That ranking is how we came up with the projects that are on this bond package. So, the projects that are included, um, are Jefferson, no, sorry. Twenty, 23rd, 23rd from Burlington to Tyler. I'm gonna just let Matt tell you, because I don't have it in front of me, but, uh, not, sorry, Ninth from Washington to Burlington and C from, um, Broadway to Burlington. So, Matt will go over the, the details of the project, but I just want to let you know how we were funding the improvements.
The, the important thing to note is on this, on this bond package, our intent is to not change our tax levy at all. It's to leave the debt service levy at where it's at so that we can maintain that and continue to improve street, streets rather than have our debt service levy go down, go up, down, and up. If we maintain a level status, that helps us, well, with the general public and just for budgeting purposes, we know that that debt service levy's gonna be at this point. That's, that's the intent of doing that.
So, Matt, why don't you talk about this agreement then?
Sure. So, what we have, like Melanie said, is for the reconstruction of 23rd Street, which is approximately, uh, 2,400 feet long. It goes from Burlington to just south of the Harper Brush Building. And then it is from Ninth Street, from Burlington to Washington, which is approximately the middle entrance into the eastern, uh, rec center parking lot. And then from C Street, from Burlington north to Broadway. The C Street and the Ninth Street are fairly normal construction projects. You know, they're about a block long. There's some residential houses that'll be impacted during the construction, but it's pretty minimal as far as, uh, you know, design and reconstruct. Uh, 23rd Street is gonna be quite a bit more challenging. As most of you know, that is the main road into the industrial park. So, we're anticipating having to meet with quite a few of those businesses, whether it be a Zoom meeting or conference calls, to try to coordinate staging. We can't go in and rip that whole strip out and reconstruct it because obviously semi-truck traffic need to be maintained to all those businesses throughout the duration of construction. So, just looking at it right now, we're kind of looking at three to five different stages of 23rd Street just to try to minimize the inconveniences during the reconstruction. Uh, we're also gonna probably have to get some easements, some temporary access easements between the property owners so we can hopefully utilize their property to get to the next property with some minor improvements, whether it be a granular surfacing drive or something like that. Just so, the last thing we want to do is have 12 stages because it really slows down construction, it costs more money, but we know we're gonna have to have more than one just to maintain access through all of that. Uh, we're hoping if all of our, uh, conversations go well with the, with the businesses out there, that we'll be able to have, uh, plans and specifications done for your second meeting in February and place them on file so we'll be able to begin construction yet, uh, next late spring into the summer months. Let's see, for all of that construction, it's estimated the cost is about $1.1 million. Uh, for the agreement tonight, we've got a lump sum design fee of $76,500. And then engineering during construction and construction observation at $82,000. We're anticipating approximately 90 working days for the construction. And I guess if there's any questions?
On C Street, I've already talked to Melanie about this one.
Correct.
The, the sidewalk's funky. You have half a block on one side of the street?
Correct.
And then the other half is on the other side?
Yes.
Could you potentially bid it as like a bid alternative in case we get a, a good bid to fix one of those sides?
Yes, we could, we could do that. We'll, we'll already have a bid item for sidewalk replacement, but that's kind of a little bit different, so we might want to add that in. The other thing we're gonna want to discuss is in the capital improvement plan, there was, uh, some money potentially allocated for sidewalk on 23rd Street from Jefferson all the way up to Burlington. So, they'll, I'm not sure what committee will want to go through to see, to see if that's something that you still want to explore. There's no sidewalks out there right now anywhere, but obviously, I know the goal during the capital improvements project was to create more pedestrian, you know, paths and circulation routes, so it's, is this one of the routes you want to start with?
Okay, great. So, is there a motion to accept this?
I'll move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Hallie, second by Rasmussen. Any other discussion? Not, please call a roll.
Hallie?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Toohill?
Yes.
Pam?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Thank you. Passed unanimously. Consideration to approve a tax abatement application of 806 North 12th Street. Uh, this is a Habitat home.
I move approve the tax abatement for 806 North 12th Street.
Second.
Thank you. Uh, moved by Flornoy, second by Toohill. Any other discussion? Please call a roll.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Toohill?
Yes.
Pam?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Thank you. Proved unanimously. Uh, ordinance number 1194. Um, I guess we should, any, well, go ahead, Aaron.
Yeah, this is the second, and I would request that we waive that and go to the third for the, uh, urban renewal area for Phase 6 of North Campus Village. The reason we, I'm asking to get the, uh, go to the third and final reading is because we need to have this in place so that we can certify the debt by the end of the year, which, or I should say by the end of this month, so that we can get the tax base set and get as much increment to, uh, fund the infrastructure that's been put into this, into the development as quickly as we can.
So, I move that we waive the rules in regard to ordinance 1194.
And, and Doug, before I take that motion, actually, I'm gonna open a public hearing to see, is there anyone there that wants to talk about that? Did anybody receive any comment via email or anything? Nothing? No one out there? Okay.
No one out there.
We'll close the public hearing. Go ahead, Doug.
Okay. Now, I'll make the motion to waive the rules in regard to ordinance 1194.
Second.
Okay, so, we're gonna suspend the rules and move this to, and, and take this to the third reading and approve it? Um, any other discussion on that?
I think we'd vote to suspend the rules first and then make a motion to approve.
Right.
Okay. I think you can do it all together too, but we'll do it that way. That's fine.
Okay, I don't know.
Okay, just, okay, so, well, the first motion will just be to suspend the rules. So, moved by Flornoy, second by, uh, Gandy. Any other discussion? Please call a roll.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Pam?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Toohill?
Yes.
Great, thank you. I was just, suspend the rules, passed unanimously.
Now, I'll move to approve ordinance 1194 from the first to the third reading and final reading. Period.
Thank you. Moved by Flornoy?
Second.
Second by Toohill?
Technically second through the third, right?
Yeah.
Well, this would be the second, right?
Yeah, we had the first reading last time.
Right, so we're not gonna do a second reading, we're doing a third reading.
Correct.
So, we're skipping the second reading. So, we're going from the first to the third.
Okay.
That's right.
Second and final. Yeah.
Okay.
Rebecca will fix it in post-production.
You fix the wording.
Okay. Any other discussion? Not, please call a roll.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Toohill?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Pam?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Passed unanimously. Um, next is the matter regarding a development agreement with Vostu Partners LLC for North Campus Village Phase 6. So, I'll open the public hearing on that. Martin, do you want to say anything?
Don't have anything to add from, from what has been submitted.
Okay.
This is a, a smaller portion of the market rate area in North Campus Village that, uh, we delayed getting going and suddenly understood that we better get it in this year. And, uh, Aaron's been fabulous in helping us move it, getting everything in order.
Thank you. And no other comments?
No, I haven't received anything from anybody.
Okay, so I'll close the public hearing. And then we'll move to the resolution.
Motion to approve resolution as stated in the agenda?
Second.
Moved by Gandy, second by Rasmussen. Any other discussion? Not, please call a roll.
Gandy?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Toohill?
Yes.
Pam?
Yes.
Thank you. Proved unanimously. Okay, I really don't have anything in the mayor's report, um, except, you know, to bring up the conversation on this proclamation. I didn't bring one forward. There didn't seem to be a lot of interest in bringing one. You know, the governor has pretty much, I would say, locked things down till December 10th, which is only a couple of weeks away. So, um, I, Aaron did work on one that basically says we're in support of the governor's, uh, governor's proclamation. And, um, I can put that out there if you want me to, but I think it's pretty much, I think, I think she's done a, you know, good job spelling it out the way it is, so...
I, it's to be noted, I believe the county today, is that correct? Is today or yesterday voted on a resolution or an ordinance in Jefferson County to require county employees, as I understand it, to, uh, to wear masks in county buildings or as, as county employees? I think Darren was here and he mentioned something about that earlier.
I looked at it, and it's, it's basically the, very similar to what we're doing.
Mm-hmm.
Where if they're working together and they're in the same pickup truck, they should be masked. If they're in different vehicles and social distancing is, is available, it's okay not to wear a mask. But if you're in a county building, you are to be wearing a mask unless social distancing is not, eh, a bit, they're not able to social distance. I love this mask.
Working great.
But, uh, it's actually better than the other one I have. Anyway, uh, and that's similar to what we're doing already in all of our city buildings and public, public, public areas and our employees also.
Because, explain what we're doing in the city for the benefit of those who might be listening?
Well, we've already... There. We've already closed, uh, all of, well, we've already closed the majority of our public buildings to the general public except for, like, uh, general business for the city we, or with the city utility bills. You can still do those online, by phone, with the Dropbox. So, we're still doing city business that way, but we're just not letting the general public in during the day. We are still having meetings, obviously, uh, with masks and social distancing as best we can for public meetings. We've closed the Public Works Water Sewer Buildings Fire Department down for, to the general public. There really is no general business needed to do during the day, anyway. The library is open as they have been since last spring, uh, doing their curbside pickup and stuff like that. Park and Rec is now, is still open, but they are wearing masks, um, for the general public. And the airport is also wearing masks, and they're open also. Did I forget anything?
Thank you.
Okay.
You know, the governor's proclamation has asked everyone in, when they're in a public building, to have masks. Uh, you know, social distance, wash your hands. I mean, there are very, there are more specifics for certain types of businesses, but for the general public, which I think is what we would be talking about.
Mm-hmm.
It would be the same, basically. So, I feel like she's probably got it covered. Unless somebody feels really strongly about doing something different.
I don't think so. I just want to point out, I've had a lot of, I've had actually a lot of comments on this, and the vast majority of them have been in support of the mask. So I've had one negative, everything else has been positive, so.
Yeah, from, from my, from the communications I received, emails and so forth, definitely there's a support, in support of masks. The more masks, I think, the better in terms of the people who have, who've communicated with me. So I think any movement we can make toward making sure our citizens are safe, social distancing, wearing masks, and all the other recommendations that have come from the governor and from the, from our, from our federal government, we, we should take, take them very seriously, especially this time of year. This time of year is going to be a lot of, I think, a lot of pressure on most of, many of us to spend time with family and, and gatherings. That could be somewhat risky, so we just want to be mindful of that. That's, that's really something we all have to decide ourselves, but as far as what the government can do for us and tell us what we can do to guide us, we, we should take those, those recommendations very seriously.
So are you, are you saying you think Fairfield needs its own proclamation?
I don't know that Fairfield needs its own proclamation. I mean, are there citizens who don't know that we're taking it seriously? If they don't think we are, then it doesn't hurt to let them know that. I think we are, I think the city is taking it seriously and paying attention to what the recommendations are, and we're following it so people can see that we're following it. That's very important. To the extent that a proclamation would make people understand that we're taking it seriously, I don't think it would hurt.
So I, I think all our actions have shown that we have taken it seriously. On a good light, over the weekend, and Aaron said he saw it today, it looks like hospitalization rates have started to tip down. So keep our fingers crossed, that's a trend. Time will tell, obviously.
Yeah. I mean, I saw last week, no, was it last week, the mayor, the CEO of our health center, our emergency management coordinator, and our public health nurse, they all spoke together in a YouTube meeting. Anyone could see it? Anyone could see it? I saw it, it was about half an hour.
We did that last week.
Yeah, it's very, it's very good. And for anyone who's interested, it's recorded, you can go on YouTube and find it and watch it again. So, you know, that to me is, is a fact, it may not be a written document, published somewhere, but it's a proclamation, to me. It shows that the city, the county, our public health, all the officials that are relevant to this crisis are paying attention to it and encouraging our citizens and people who live here to be, to be careful. So I think that was, that's the proclamation, if you want to go see it, and I'm saying this out loud in case someone doesn't know, you can go online and see what the city, what the city is doing and continues to do to make sure all of us are safe.
Thank you. That's all I have. John, do you have anything for the attorney's report, city attorney's report?
Yes. It'll just be a sentence or two. We are in the process of looking for something back on the ambulance lawsuit called Memo of Understanding as far as all of the terms to getting that thing dismissed yet for the end of the year. So hopefully I can give you a better report and a more detailed workout on what's agreed, but we just got the agreement from the last of the four defense counsel to go ahead and commit to all of the provisions that have been sent up to the attorney on the plaintiff's side. And I expect we'll hear more over the holiday, and we should have a good report for you for the December meeting.
Thank you, John. Committee and board reports. There was the Board of Adjustment minutes. And Melanie, you going to talk about that specifically?
Board of Adjustment met last Monday. There was a request for a variance related to four points in three different sections of the code. The variance was denied per Iowa code. When a variance is approved, the city council has the option to ask the Board of Adjustment to reconsider it. However, when a variance is denied, there's no action for the council. So we started bringing you the Board of Adjustment minutes just so that you are made aware of the variances that are being requested, and you have the opportunity to see any that are approved. Again, no action needed tonight, this is for your information.
Great, thanks, Melanie. Any comment or questions? Okay, Arbor Committee.
I was present, so I'll just go over it real quickly. The group elected Steve Taylor as their chairperson. So he put together these minutes, and he'll be, he'll be chairing all the meetings moving forward. The basic point was just talking about the management plan for Lampton Woods. So District Forester Ray Lynn is on Arbor Committee. He wrote a woodland management plan that we reviewed at the meeting, or reviewed prior to the meeting, and everyone agreed it was great. And the only additions we wanted was to add the ability to replant native understory trees and shrubs, because Ray's plan was more about releasing what's already growing, which is a common tool that's used in woodland management, but we want to also be allowed to plant in certain areas some native understory trees. And we also wanted to include something about wildlife in there, about, are there any bird species that we may want to make sure there's habitat for and that kind of thing? I looked at the example plan that the Preserve Board contact shared with me, and it was three sentences about wildlife, so it really doesn't have to be extensive. But Ray is a, he's a forester, he doesn't have a wildlife background. So we're going to share this, or I already shared this with our friends at Natty Committee, and they have some people on that committee who are wildlife management experts. So we're going to have them provide input. One thing that was agreed was not to include any sort of trail extension or expansion in this management plan, and that came at the advice of, of our contact on the Preserve Board. He said he would hate to see the plan get postponed or held up because of the, the trail portion, which has been denied twice already by the Preserve Board. He said, I advise leaving it out, passing an actual woodland management plan, woodland and wildlife management plan, get that established, and if the city wants to come back and third time's a charm with the trail, go ahead. The Trails Committee's fine with that. They're not, they're not hot to trot on raising tens of thousands, hundreds of thousands of dollars for a trail that runs next to the road. They're, it's not high in their priorities right now. So it just simplifies the whole process. Leave it out. Get the, get the woodland and wildlife management plan adopted, and then we can actually start managing it and getting rid of some of the invasives and supporting the hardwoods that are trying to grow. When I say wildlife management, that may include deer hunting, because the deer are eating and destroying the next generation of trees before they can grow mature. It's a problem all over the country. So the council will see this as, before it goes, before the Preserve Board, but that's the update. Arbor Committee is looking at doing a joint meeting with Natty Committee at some point to compare notes and finalize the plan.
Thank you. Economic Development Committee?
We met tonight, just had two agenda items. The first were some amendments to the R5 Zone. R5 Zone is a very specific area of town. There's one little section northwest part of town, but we'll ignore that for the time being. R5 Zone is, it's the area that was, the Parsons College had built some small mobile homes for their, their staff and their faculty back in the 60s over behind Hy-Vee, west and southwest of Hy-Vee. And it got adopted, it got annexed into the city in the 80s, and then this section of code was created about that.
Is that the end of Jackson Road?
What's that?
Is that the area you're talking about, end of Jackson Road?
Yeah, between, gosh.
Dead ends into a trailer court?
No.
Not quite.
No.
Melanie, what are the, what are the cross streets that we usually say? 17th to 19th?
Really?
14th to 19th?
West of that empty lot there.
Yeah, it's a bunch of small, small parcels, small houses, a lot of empty lots, could use some good developing. So just to back up, the reason we looked at this, we had a potential builder who owned several lots in that area come to the committee and show plans for a very, I wouldn't call it a tiny home, it's not a tiny home, it's just a little smaller than what was allowed to be built there in terms of the building width. So we started by looking at the building width and discovered several other amendments. I'm going to highlight them just because what we're looking for is the council to approve this coming back as a formal amendment change. So just a few things, we, we changed the name from the General and Manufactured Home Residence District to High Density Residence District to try to match the code, sorry, the comprehensive plan, plans for that area. A couple of things we did with the lot area was we changed the minimum lot size for single family dwelling, but we matched it with the, the lot size of 90-some percent of the empty lots that are out there, which is 6,200 square feet. So we said, okay, you can build a single-family resident, and then we changed it to allow for a two-family attached dwelling, so a duplex, we say you can build a duplex on one of those lots. You still have to, to meet all the other requirements, but again, trying to incentivize some housing in that area. And then for a triplex, you would need a lot and a half. So if somebody owned two lots and they wanted to divide them, and, sorry, if they owned three lots and they wanted to divide them into a lot and a half, they could do a triplex on each. And for a quadruplex, you would need two lots combined. So again, it made a little bit more sense to reference the actual size of lots out there. We fixed the corner lot similarly to, we discussed this earlier, of not having two front yards setbacks, but one can be a side yard, and they can choose which side can be the side yard, depending on which way they want to face the property. So.
You mean before they build?
Yes. Yeah. And it would, it would also dictate their address, you know, which, which side they're going to go with. There was something funny in there where it said that a single-floor, singles, one-story single-family dwelling could be 750 square feet, but a manufactured home could be 720. So we just changed them both to 720, with the smaller footprint. And then this was the one that really helped this, this particular gentleman. So the building width is still 24 feet, and it's, that excludes open porches or steps. We added the sentence, "An attached garage may be included in the width requirement." So I know Tom had pointed this out, not in the square footage requirement, but we're saying the attached garage can be part of that 24 feet. And the designs that we saw, I believe the house itself was maybe 18 without the attached garage, so it would not have met this requirement. But if we change it and we say you may include your attached garage, and we defined attached, meaning it has to be connected with an interior structure, so either right up against the house, or if there's a breezeway, it has to be completely enclosed, that's attached. You can count that towards your 24-foot width. Again, if you go out there and you look and you see what's going on, this still would fit the look of these small lots, and, and we felt we, we could be more permissive in this one area of town. So again, this is only for R5. And the last thing was an amendment, amendment that we added, thanks to Tom pointing out, that we didn't want any structures too close to the street, so we're saying 20-foot minimum from any structure or accessory structure to the edge of the street. So we don't want any, anything getting too close to the street and creating sight issues. Yeah, if you're driving and you can't see around a corner, for example. So if those sound like something worth considering, then I'll make a motion to approve this as a concept and come back with formal amendment at a future council meeting.
Second.
Okay, moved by Hallie, second by Flornoy, to bring these changes in ordinance form. Any other discussion? Not, please call a roll.
Hallie.
Yes.
Flornoy.
Yes.
Ham.
Yes.
Tohill.
Yes.
Gandy.
Yes.
Rasmussen.
Yes.
Thank you very much. That was passed unanimously, and.
The second item was no action, but we're discussing a potential cash in the place of tax abatement incentive for new single-family residents. I've got a program that Bloomfield, Iowa initiated, they were giving $15,000 cash for new single-family homes, $150,000 value or more, and no, no abatement, but only within a TIF district, which makes me think that they probably utilize the TIF funds to pay for it. But I talked with their community development director, she said actually they pulled 150,000 from the general fund, and it's all been used, 10 homes. So they got 10 new homes, and they'll recap that investment when it's on the tax roll. So committee's talking about investing, investigating, not investing. We're not ready to invest. We need to investigate before we invest. And just make sure we're, we don't give away too much. You know, you want to incentivize, but you don't want to lose out. So, you know, if we, if we offer a cash payment as an option, that's maybe 80% the value of what they'd get in an abatement, then we know we're covered, and we know we didn't give away too much, but that could be very attractive to some people, especially if you're selling a house. If you get the cash upfront, help pay off your loan, because the abatement only really helps if you own the house over that. Well, we have a three-year abatement that's only up to 75,000. We could look at doing potentially 100% three years like other cities do. So we'll have more discussions on it, but just know we're, we're looking into it as per, our comprehensive plan wanted us to. We're supposed to be incentivizing housing development, and so I think there's a solution here. It probably won't look exactly like Bloomfield's, but.
So just R1?
Yeah, that's another whole question, you know? Are we going to get out a single-family? Are we going to allow multi-family? What's, is there a minimum property value, or is it a percentage of property value? So.
Be curious to know if the 10 houses was significantly more than previous years.
It would be interesting. I mean, I've got the lady's number if anyone wants to call her. She's very nice. She was just on her way out the door. I think she also does their code enforcement. She said, I'm about to go do code enforcement, so she was loading up her, her tickets, or I don't know what she was doing.
That's an interesting combination.
Yeah. Small towns, you gotta, you gotta share roles.
It's about the same incentive, it's just a different way of giving it.
Right.
So you're giving it to the builder instead of the owner.
Right.
The resident, I guess, so.
Yeah, so then you've incentivized the builder to build.
Yeah.
Because, you know, we wonder sometimes if other incentives are freebies that would not necessarily stop somebody if they weren't around. Somebody who's going to build a house for themselves, probably going to build it, whether or not they get a little kickback on the taxes or not, but for a builder, Martin, we're still here, he could speak to this, you know? He needed all those different incentives and grants that he got just to make it work. So we'll keep exploring, and I know there's a solution in there somewhere, we just got to keep thinking about it.
Great, thank you for the work on that. Administrator and department, department reports. Melanie, you want to talk about the project updates?
Um, I'll start with the wastewater treatment plant. Things are not where we want them to be at this point in time. The substantial completion date for the oxidation ditches is the end of the month. PKG has completed one of the two of them, so, and they're not even completely done with the one that they're working on. Additionally, PKG is going to be temporarily suspending work due to COVID within manage, management out there. So as far as liquidated damages, that will be a discussion later when the work is actually complete, and we'll, we'll talk about, you know, how long they were shut down due to COVID. We'll obviously give you recommendations when that comes. But anyway, we, we will not, or they will not be meeting the substantial completion date of November 30th. We do have good news on Highway 1. We are starting, or preparing to start for the land negotiations and land acquisition. We have the public hearing on that at your next council meeting. But the good news was that we were notified that we received the $500 million in safety funds for the project. This is money that we were kind of counting on, so it's not like we got a half million.
More.
More. But that does mean we're that much closer to having all of the funding secured for this project. The, the, I'll say the unsecured funding is additional grant programs that we are still waiting to apply for, and also to see where the bids come in on that project. Then on Merrill &amp; Carpenter, this is a project that was scheduled for construction in 2020, construction year, but it was pushed back due to the road use tax funds. We are on schedule to bid that project here in January, and so that is reconstruction of Merrill and Carpenter from 4th Street to about 600 feet west of there. We do have two trees that we know need to come down on Carpenter, and we'll get those down here even before construction starts. The Carnegie elevator description is completely wrong. They, I got a message that they are not half-done with the project, they are done with the project. They have a few minor items that need to be done. They were items that the Carnegie Foundation was to be doing, so it wasn't part of the elevator contract, but that work needs to be done before the final inspection of the elevator can be done and that we can put it back in service. put it back in service. So far, Indian Hills has not had anyone that needs it, so, you know, there's not a lot of inconvenience with it being shut down. Work has gone smoothly, Aaron and I hardly knew it was even going on, it's been going that smoothly, so, good news is that that project is finally done, and those were the only things that I wanted to highlight tonight.
Can I ask one question real quick?
Yeah.
The public meeting on how we want improvements?
Yes.
Will that involve which option we do, or just land acquisition in general?
It's gonna be both.
Both.
Yep. So, state law required to have a public hearing on the necessity of the project, or I should say, the necessity of purchasing land?
Okay.
For it, and that's what the public hearing's gonna be on specifically. However, Aaron and I would like to see whether it's a resolution or just a simple action item from the council, that you agree to the scope of the project, and that includes leaving South Junction Road open or closing it. And I believe in, was it last council meeting or the council meeting before, and we can send stuff, stuff out to you, it'll obviously be attached to the next council meeting. We had two layouts, one was to close South Junction Road and allow for a little bit more land development, or development at that particular intersection, or to leave South Junction Road open, requires more land purchase, but it does keep traffic off of Court Street, which is a residential street. Staff recommendation is to leave it open, but there has been some back and forth, and so that's why we want to make sure that the council is agreeing on those actions. And obvious, if, if you have any other questions about the pros and cons of it, we can cover that on the next council meeting, or you can call Aaron and I prior to, to make sure we have those questions answered for you.
Thank you. Aaron?
Just wanted to let the council know that city staff normally has, the day before Thanksgiving, Christmas, and New Year's, we close the offices at noon, so providing the council doesn't have a change of heart on that, that's what our plan will be.
Sounds good.
That's just, the other, the other part was, is the mayor and I met with the mayors of Lockridge, Libertyville, and Vedic City, discussing the emergency management levy, or mute, the emergency communications levy through the Emergency Management Commission. That appeared to go very well. We're still reaching out to the other communities in this, in the county, which would be Pleasant Flane, Batavia, and...
Packwood.
Packwood. So, we're, we're still reaching out to them, but we, we feel like we've got a pretty good start on this whole 2080 discussion and the emergency communications levy through the county.
Right, thank you.
Could you give us a little bit of update, or flesh out maybe what you're saying about the fire station?
We've got, we've got a, as far as the, the possible new fire station?
Yes.
That, the, the architects have done their study, I think we're gonna present that probably at the next meeting with them presenting it. So, we don't have all the information yet back, but would like them to present what they found.
Thank you.
Great. So, want to remind everybody, the next meeting is normal, December 14th, that will be our only meeting in January.
In...
December.
Or, excuse me, yeah, December, sorry, getting ahead of myself there. Yeah, December 14th, and I want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving, y'all, and everybody out there, don't eat too much turkey, as they say, and, you know, you can have good family days if you're together, if not, you can be like us, we're gonna do a Zoom talent show. So, it ought to be really funny. So, I'm trying to figure out if my tap dancing from twenty-five years ago would still be considered a talent, probably not. So, anyway, have a good Thanksgiving, everyone. And with that, I'll ask for an adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
Moved by Two-Hill, second by Gandy. All who's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All who's opposed, same sign. Meeting adjourned.